...process. The purpose of this presentation is to share the results of data collected during the pilot of middle school science curriculum programs. This presentation is for the board's information. The funding recommendation is included in tonight's consent item on page seven titled "Middle School Science Curriculum Adoption: Accelerated Learning, Inc."
We've got a team here. Thank you very much. Okay, I think it's ready now. We're glad to have you here, and it's always nice to get some information before we vote on a big-ticket item, which is what this is. So, thank you.
We're happy to be here. Thank you, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the board. My name is Ben Reed. I am the Middle School Science Instructional Support Specialist. I am joined by my fabulous colleagues, Ms. Phyllis Cotner from the Magnet Department, and Mr. Jonathan Wies, our Purchasing Manager. And we're excited to share with you this evening about the middle school science curriculum adoption. All of the work that you will hear tonight is in support of the Student Engagement and Success Work Group target, as you see there, to identify, recommend, and implement the use of curricular resources that support district initiatives. I want to share with you a brief history of science adoptions in our district. The last adoption was in the year 2000. So, you may recall that the iPhone was yet to be released. Pluto was still a planet, and I was in the fifth grade. Let that sink in a little bit. The Next Generation Science Standards were adopted, actually, rather, released in April of 2013, and our state quickly adopted those the summer thereafter. So, our curriculum has been out of alignment now for seven years. And that's what led us to this work, is to begin adopting a new curriculum. As you can see by our timeline, we've been very busy over the last year. And that brings us to February. We're happy to share with you our results. Back in September, we had a team that really dissected seven different curriculum companies. We had classroom teachers there, ESOL and special education representatives, as well as WSU faculty, who really helped us prescreen all of those curriculum companies to narrow it down to our top three.
And one of the things that was very important when they were going through the screening process was to ensure that it aligned with Next Generation Science Standards, and those are our state standards and also used by our district. And so, they were checking to make sure that any curriculum we were interested in had that alignment in place.
An important piece of that alignment as well was, as we moved to the Standards Reference grading, all of our scales are in alignment with NGSS. So, if we have a curriculum that is aligned with the NGSS, then we have something that will support our scales work as well. I want to take a quick moment and thank all of the schools, principals, teachers, and other staff members who helped make this possible. We are really happy to have so many involved in this process.
Also, while we're here, if you take a look at the schools that are listed, you can see that we have representation from title, non-title, ELL. We have an alternative school represented. Special education populations are in those schools. So, we did everything possible to ensure that the diversity of our district was represented in the pilot.
So, in October, we were able to bring in all of the teachers that were going to pilot the material for us, along with the three vendors from the top three chosen curriculum. They were able to sit down for a day, give them training on all of the different materials, the online component, the text, and tips and tricks on how it would be best for them to employ that material in the classroom. Moving on through, from October to December, mid-December, we actually did the pilot. This gave the three of us an opportunity to actually get out there and get some really good anecdotal data, really hear what the teachers thought, what the students thought, which we got some really great information from, from just those conversations, sitting down, talking to them, seeing how engaged they were, see what they thought about, you know, as compared to what they had been using for the year before that. And then, in mid-December, we were able to sit down with each of those teachers again and actually allow them to sit and compare notes. Then, we filled out a rubric which actually started to indicate which one of the curriculum we would actually be recommending. Then, you know, we were actually able to hear a lot more about how they felt about each of the different curriculum. And then, they could also hear each other talk about, because each group piloted their own, so they didn't get to see any of the others. So, this gave them an opportunity to actually hear what the others thought of the different curriculum that we had out there.
Another important piece of feedback that we collected in December was student feedback. So, we were able to send out a Google form, and 650 of our students participated in that survey, were able to tell us how they felt about the curriculum that they were exposed to over the last quarter. So, this information was then presented to the Student Engagement and Success Work Group, and they evaluated all of the feedback. The first piece they looked at was the overall teacher feedback that we collected at that December meeting. That was more of a holistic rubric that really got the big-picture perspective of how they felt their curriculum went.
As John mentioned, we also obtained student feedback. So, as the students participated in different learning activities throughout the pilot time, they worked and gave feedback on how much did that help their learning. Here's where they were, and how much did it help them understand the concepts that were being taught. So, a very important piece is knowing, how is this book working with the kids who are actually be in it?
The learning experience data was using a third-party rubric to really hyperanalyze specific learning opportunities that were provided by the curriculum. How much did they support the student learning, and how much did they support our teachers as far as resources go? And they were able to provide us a rating from that.
For the curriculums that we looked at, we also look at, look, uh, sorry. We also analyzed technology, so to see how well that worked with our district, and also what were the data pieces that we could pull to inform teachers.
And lastly, we reviewed a comprehensive professional development plan to ensure that our staff was ready to roll with a new curriculum. And that's why, based on all the data that we compiled, it is our recommendation that we adopt STEM scopes as our next middle school science curriculum.
As we mentioned previously, we had the student feedback piece, but we also had the opportunity to talk to students. And we have just some slides here that show some of the comments that they were giving, specifically about STEM scopes, and some of the unique perspective that they shared about the curriculum. So, we'll just flip through those.
So, as you can see, our students really enjoyed STEM scopes and are excited to start using it. We also want to mention that STEM scopes offers a very robust and comprehensive package. One thing that's really important is to have curriculum that's aligned to the Next Generation Science Standards, as well as the three-dimensional learning framework, which is embedded within that NGSS framework. The other piece is differentiated instruction. So, something unique about this company is they offer, on the online component, an intervention tab to give teachers some ideas on how they can best work with students who might need extra support or smaller group instruction, as well as an enrichment tab for those who are ready to go above and beyond and meet those Level Four targets. This also incorporates the Five-E model of instruction, which is an inquiry-based practice, and it also comes with user-friendly teacher manuals.
And as I mentioned before, it comes with textbooks, student journals, and a lot of hands-on materials, lab materials, that are pretty comprehensive, good quality, and help to illustrate the different lessons as they work through it. We also have dual-language materials and technology that helps with both the student and the teacher use. Then, finally, all of these products are customizable. So, not only are we getting what we need now, but as we work our way through the years, this is a seven-year adoption that we're recommending, as we work through each year, we can purchase based on what we actually need. And we'll learn more about that as we work through this process and how much we use of each of the different materials.
I want to expound a little bit more on the customization piece. Looking at it from the teacher perspective and student perspective, all of the textbooks are customizable. So, the set of sixth-grade textbooks can be customized with only the topics that we cover in sixth grade. Same thing with seventh grade and eighth grade. That will help eliminate a lot of paper waste. Same thing with the hands-on kits. Those kits will align with the textbook. So, your sixth-grade teacher is only receiving sixth-grade hands-on kits. And the last piece would be the online component. They are willing to build us a unique 259 URL, so that when our teachers log on to that platform, when they hit the sixth-grade drop-down tab, that is going to mirror their instructional unit guide that they're using on a daily basis. Same thing for seventh and eighth grade. Oops, sorry.
We have also a proposed professional development plan. Given board approval, the teachers will be able to receive a half-day if in-service, which will provide an overview of the adopted curriculum. You can see that we have February through August that the company has agreed that they would be able to allow access to the online component, so teachers could begin planning, collaboration, and preparing for the materials. We have April, July, and September. Those dates aren't up there, but you can see the plans going forward as far as getting staff and coaching support prepared and ready to rock and roll with this curriculum.
So, it is an exciting time to teach science, and it's even more exciting time to teach science in 259. So, we're excited for things to come, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to share with you this evening. We'd like to open it up for any comments that you might have.
Wow. You've overwhelmed us. We don't have it. I just, my one question is, will you absolutely promise me it won't be 20 years before we adopt another science textbook?
Pending legislation and funding. Yes, ma'am.
Pop out. My one question on this, because I know you ran three pilots, and when you were ranking and going through all the decision-making to end up with this one, how much difference was there between this one and the other two? Was this a clear choice?
In the end, it definitely was the clear choice. Did you want to speak to that? Okay. So, there was one company that after the overall rubric, it was very clear that they were not going to be an option. And that left with two to compare to. But when you look at the customization features and the online components of STEM scopes, it's really what separated them and gave them that edge.
Okay. And one other question, and that's in regards to your customization, where you're talking about the online pieces. And you said that we can have those automatically through the company customized to match to our pacing guides and scope and sequence?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that when a teacher gets it, they don't get their, the company's package? They get a package that matches to what we want our staff to do, correct?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
We very specifically asked them and explained to them that we were going through the SRG process, and if they had experience working with that, and would they be able to support it. And they said that we send that to them, and they would be able to work with that and also support teachers in understanding how to use this curriculum with SRGs.
Good. Perfect. I'm seeing no other questions, so you did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
The proof will be in the next votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mike?
Consent.
Stan?
No consent items to pull.
Mike?
Nothing.
Julie?
I'd like to pull C2.
Okay. Ernestine?
I'd like to pull D1. I guess it's just D.
It's just a D, but that's okay. That's good. Ben?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull? Do I hear a motion to accept all but those two items?
I move that we accept the consent agenda items except for C2 and D1, or D?
I second.
It was moved by Stan and seconded by Ben that we accept the rest of the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. Motion passes six-zero. See, you can contact that company after all. Let's look at C2. Julie?
Yeah. We got to hear a really nice presentation from our operations folks about things that they were doing in our area of nutrition for our students. Learned about the breakfast increase, and just some great things you guys were doing. I think during that presentation, you told us that if you were going to make a lot of additional expansion and improvements that the facility needed to be enlarged and/or upgraded, does this work accomplish that, or is this work just simply a maintenance project to maintain our current program?
Julie, I will bring your attention here. And we, there's several different things that are going on all at the same time, and I see my team is coming, so I will go ahead and let them expound on that. But there are several different things that are occurring there with this agenda piece.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is not any sort of an expansion. It is simply taking care of maintenance that the facility needed. As you all know, it was built back in the '70s, and so there was some much-needed work. I'll let David talk about the specifics of the work that will be done.
It's primarily HVAC work, so we have all these makeup air units that are originally equipment, so 1974. And we hope all is well until the work actually gets done.
And Julie?
There is a lot of, it needs to be done.
And Julie, also, this is separate from what you're asking. So, we know that there's some things that we are looking at to see how we can expand our workspace, but this particular agenda item has nothing to do with that work. It's just...
This one's just maintenance. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I assumed as much, knowing about the facility, but I thought it was good to clarify that. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve this item.
I'll second.
Okay. Julie made the motion, and Stan seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion passes six-zero. Item D. Ernestine?
I would just like to hear more about what this Prime Fit Youth Foundation mentoring program is. I think I've heard some good stuff about it, but I would like to have public know and me know.
Okay. I will, if you look at your table and your packet area, there is a document that I have provided to you with specificity of this particular program and what we will be doing with it. And I will read and kind of elaborate a little bit on what we're planning to do. This particular program overview will be targeted at six elementary school, and let me go back and explain the why. We want to ensure that we are closing achievement gaps and ensuring that all of our students in our school district have the opportunity. And as we look at our data, we know that we have some groups of students that we need to do more for, so, and to ensure that they all have opportunities to succeed in our school district. And so, one of the things that, we have a team, as we shared before earlier on, that is working on closing the achievement gap and some of the things that we need to do to be able to accelerate the learning and giving all students opportunities. And this is another piece. And as we chunk this, you will begin to see more things coming to you along the journey as we continue to work on closing the achievement gap, and this is one of them. The Prime Fit Youth Foundation mentoring program will be targeted at six elementary schools, Buckner, Clark, Gordon Parks, Leovitcher, Mueller, and Spate. And they will be working with approximately 120 students at those particular sites. At those sites, you will have folks that will be working there approximately 20 hours a week in each of the schools. And the services that there will be providing will be daily check-ins, weekly group mentoring sessions, de-escalation interventions, all targeting student outcomes for decreasing office referral and suspension rates, increased sense of student-school connections, increased student self-efficacy, and increased the use of self-regulatory strategies with those targeted students. So, that's what this particular item is asking you all to support this work, so that we can continue to work on closing our achievement gap.
And so, we will hire some people to work with this?
This is actually a foundation, and they have their own staff. And we are contracting out with them to be able to come into our schools to work with our students.
Thank you. Thank you. I move, unless there's other questions.
There's none.
I move that we adopt this Part D of our consent agenda. I'll second.
It was moved by Ernestine and seconded by Julie that we adopt the proposal. Please cast your vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you. Next item.
Under policy, first review, BOE Policy 7410, collection of nutrition services monies and unpaid meal costs. Administration proposes revisions to BOE Policy 7410 as provided in Appendix Eight. This item provides for the board's first review of BOE Policy 7410.
Before we consider that, we do have some people here in the audience that are going to be working with this program. Dr. Thompson?
That is correct.
We have new partners, so I'd like to introduce to you some members from the Prime Fit Youth Foundation. If you all would raise your hand and wave there. Thank you for joining the WPS family, and we look forward to working with you.
Welcome. We're glad to see you. I recognize you. Okay. I am sorry, Mike. She leaned over and said that, and I thought that was perfect time to get to see them. But we are ready to move on to that agenda item on policy. This is our first read on this nutrition services policy. And are there questions, concerns? Yes, we have some. Ben?
I don't want to steal your thunder, Julie. I see her also on the list, too.
No, go for it.
But I had a constituent question, Dr. Thompson, about this specific policy proposal, and what, if anything, would this change for the average WPS family in terms of what we're doing today versus what we'd be doing after?
Some of the changes that are, it's not really any changes to the policy. It's really clarifying the policy, per se. One of the things that the policy will do is it will clarify what debt means. That's the first thing that it will do. And then, the second thing it will do, it will allow us to be able to support the schools a little bit differently as it relates to the collection of fees. I know that sometimes, you know, schools, they have tons of other things that they need to do in the office besides chase people to pay their fees, or to send out notices and things like that. Now, they will do that initial, but then at some point, they will then turn that over to the district-level offices, and then we will take it from there to continue to communicate, and then set up, you know, opportunities for families to have the opportunity to make payments, or all those kinds of things that we always typically do anyway. And then, the other thing that this will allow us to be able to do is to also continue to share with families, as it's written in the policy, that regardless, we will continue to feed students meals. So, we will not be doing the shaming and all of the things that people say that happens in the, you know, that you hear in the newspaper. We do not do that in the Wichita Public Schools. We never will do that. But we do want to make sure that families have an opportunity to either pay their fees, or have the opportunity to fill out a free and reduced lunch form, so that they can have the opportunity to be able to have that supplemental for their children's lunches if they qualify for those things. So, it just gives us a full-round, comprehensive plan to be able to support families, as well as make sure they fill out the correct forms, if they need to do that, as well as to help them have some type of way in which they can continue to pay those balances in a way that's good for those families and to get the fees paid. So, that's really the gist of the whole policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
I guess I do have one additional question beyond that. I, my understanding is that about a year ago, that in the paperwork that was given to parents at the beginning of the year was a piece of paperwork that included that potentially unpaid fees would go to collections. And is this a part of that piece also, that if we get to the point...
Yes, it is.
Yep. So, but that won't happen right away.
That is the last resort.
Yeah.
We will do all we can to communicate with families. Again, as I stated before, we will make payment plans, whatever we need to do to accommodate families if they are ones that need to pay. But again, if you get to a point, there are opportunities for you to fill out those free and reduced forms. And so, we will encourage families to apply for those, so that they can, if they qualify, they won't have to have that issue.
Yeah. And then, of course, we're also going to continue, I think you already said this, but we're going to continue to feed students, and we're not going to do any food shaming, or any of those kinds of things that are important for our kids to continue...
We don't today, and we won't tomorrow.
Yep. Just, and I knew we weren't going to, but I want that to be clarified as well for the public.
Thank you.
Mike?
Dr. Thompson, I asked this question about six, eight months ago, and Susan answered it very well, but I got to ask you the question.
Okay. I might have Susan come answer, since she answered it so well.
I think Susan can answer from her seat. What is our debt for unpaid lunches at this point in time? The last time I asked you, it was around $280,000.
So, the delinquent debt, not the bad debt that is late?
I'm going to have, I was going to ask you to come, because we also are recording this, and we want folks to hear.
So, I will provide you approximate numbers based on the last report I had. We are sitting most likely around $350,000 in delinquent debt now. It has grown fairly substantially since we kind of implemented some program changes related to that whole change in meals. And so, part of the rationale behind this policy change is not only to work with those families who actually want to work with us and are making payments and doing those things, but then to address perhaps those families that need a little bit more support from the administrative offices to give them some additional options before we would get to some sort of collection action.
Well, and the reason I asked that question, I heard on the news, and I thought it was kind of interesting that there was a gentleman that paid off the school lunch debt. And I thought, gee, that's kind of a magnetism thing to do, and it was $5,000. And I thought, gee, that's kind of cool. That's kind of neat. How can I help? And when I heard $280,000, I'm going, well, that's out of my budget. So, that's why I ask it, because doing my algebra, that's about six teachers paying. You knew that was going to come back to haunt you. About six teachers pay that we've got in bad debt that's not helping us out. And I, you know, I'm glad to see we're doing something about it. You know, I understand some people are less fortunate than others, and we need to take care of that, too. But it's nice that we're getting our money, because we don't get it very easily from the other direction either. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. I'm seeing no other questions on this, so we will move this to a second read. Next item.
Under Operations, 2020 Legislative Update. Administration will provide an update on the 2020 Kansas Legislative Session, highlighting bills that are being tracked and issues that impact Wichita Public Schools. This item provides an opportunity for the board's information and discussion.
So, as Mr. Davis is coming, we, I just want to kind of give a couple of updates. We have just come back from Washington, DC, representing the state of Kansas. They take a delegation from Kansas, and this year, we were asked to attend with the Kansas Association of School Boards, and we had the opportunity to visit our congressman in Washington, DC. Some of the topics, he's going to talk a little bit about some of the topics, but I know in particular, one of the ones that we stayed heavy on for our district in particular is fully funding special education. And so, we spent some time talking with our congressman about some of the proposals and bills that are being put forth around that over a 10-year period of time, fully funding that special education. It was very important to us and our, in our, to Susan Willis, and making sure that we have the funds that we need to be able to support our students. We were very... We were very well represented at the state level with folks from across the state participating in that. And it was a, it was a very, I guess, productive meeting. We think we got our point across very nicely. So I just want to kind of give an update of the federal level pieces. And then we are hot and heavy in Topeka right now and there are lots of bills and things that are going on and we just thought it would be a good idea to bring those to you and our community members so that you are aware of what is happening in Topeka and the bills that will be impacting education. So with that being said, Mr. Terrell Davis, take it away.
Question. Did you meet all four of the congresspeople from Kansas?
We did. We did two and then the other half of the delegation did the other two.
Okay.
So we met with all four. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you. It's great to be home, actually. President Logan, Superintendent Thompson and board were here to give a presentation. First of all, kudos to Superintendent Thompson, who did an excellent job in DC and held her own as she was talking to different staffers and different congresspeople. And so kudos to her. Not only do we talk about fully funding IDEA, but also school choice. We had a, our legislative luncheon the day of the president's budget or State of the Union address. And so we had a chance to talk about school choice and we believe that there is school choice inside the public schools. And especially a great example of that is in Wichita where we have our magnet school programs as well as our CTE programs. And so we were able to highlight the great things that are happening here in Wichita. We will also follow up with staffers over the next couple of weeks and months and then I will return back to DC this summer to follow up with some conversation as well. And then we've also invited them to come to Wichita and gave a special invitation to Senator Moran to come back to Wichita and visit us. So as we look at the legislative session, we are off to a fun session. It feels like it's the end of the session already, but we're actually in the middle. But they are just going through so many topics at such a speed and you've heard the recent information where President, Chair, the head of the Senate, Senator Wagle, has decided that she's going to put an end of discussion because of the constitutional amendment situation that happened in the House. And so that gives us the feel, usually people will do that at the end of the session when they need a, something passed, they'll hold up the budget or hold up a particular item, but she's holding up a lot of conversation because of that. So here's some of the bills that we are looking at and feel free to ask questions as we go along. High-density at-risk funding, you've heard myself, you've heard Susan Willis talk about that. It's important. There is Senate Bill two-seventy-one, which removes the sunset language. There's discussion on moving back. So the compromise, if you will, is that they would just move the sunset back to twenty-two forty. That's a problem with us because it gets us outside of the jurisdiction of the courts and allows there to be some funny business. And so we really are pressing hard that we just remove that sunset and that we don't just kick the can down the road for a couple of years. There will be more discussions on that as we go forward. As we also look at at-risk funding, there are a couple of things that have come up. House Bill twenty-five-forty. There's new requirements on schools and their use of at-risk funding. Basically, the district would have to select all of our at-risk programming from the approved list of KSDE, which is hard. It really handcuffs school districts and a district like ours that, you know, we've got different layers of interventions. There are some programs that may not be on the approved list but are very effective in our district. And so this bill is troublesome for us. And then you have Senate Bill three-fifty-one. It requires the Board of Education to conduct an assessment of each school to determine the educational need before setting the budget. Basically, the budget would be set to ensure improvement in student academic performance. And secondly, the Board of Education would allocate money to ensure all students reach the role standards. So basically putting more emphasis on you guys to look at each individual school. I can already ensure you and assure you, you guys are already doing that. Susan Willis does an excellent job, as well as Dr. Thompson and the entire cabinet, of making sure that schools get the appropriate funding they need to make the impact. Just remember that a voucher, if it looks like a voucher and it walks like a voucher and it sounds like a voucher, it is a voucher. Voucher is a voucher. And so you have a couple of unique voucher plans out there, things that are out there tied to different things and are trying to tie it to at-risk funding. So first thing you get is House Bill twenty-four-sixty-five. It would expand the current tax credit. Currently, it's for the lowest one-hundred performing elementary schools. Any kid who qualifies for free lunch could go to a private school, private parochial school, and there could be a tax credit there. This expands that to speak to not just the bottom one-hundred performing elementary schools, but any kid in any school that is free lunch could go to a private or parochial school and qualify for the tax credit. One of the problems we have here is there could be a kid who is at a very successful elementary school, but because their free lunch could transfer, transfer to a private or parochial school that actually performs lower than the public school that they're currently in. It's a voucher. House Bill twenty-five-fifty-two. Any student who scores a one on the state ELA assessment in the third or fourth grade would be given a voucher to an accredited private school. Or they could, the parent could have state funds directed to evidence-based reading programs approved by the student's parents for the student. These savings accounts would be housed in the state treasurer's office and deducted from the school budget. So all that to say this, kid scores a one in the third grade or fourth grade on ELA, that parent could come to the district and say, I want to use this reading program as an intervention for my kid and we would be on the hook to pay for that intervention. And so, again, just voucher programs in that. Our Senate Bill three-thirty-five is actually our bill that we have proposed. It authorizes school districts to pay for tuition for students dual-credit in a post-secondary educational institution. And this is our early college program. We had our hearing today and I was there to testify. We had great support from around the state, some really heavy hitters. We were supported by the community college, community colleges, private colleges, Friends University, the Wichita Chamber, and our own Senator Mike Peterson was one of our supporters on our bill. And we got a lot of positive comments from the committee and the chair. We also had the Board of Regents who actually supported, the Kansas Board of Regents who also was a supporter of our plan, Dr. Blake Flanders. And one of the comments was that our early college program was one of the most comprehensive programs they had ever seen in terms of an early college program. So kudos to our team for that.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question?
Do you want to wait till the end or you want to take them one at a time?
Either way, sir.
It's up to you. Your call.
I think I've got two or three more slides, so we can, okay. Next bill is Senate Bill two-ninety-four on property taxes. It would increase regulations and public notice requirements on property tax decisions. So if we were to increase those things, you won't necessarily hear our name out in front as an opposer of this, only because we are in agreement with a block of individuals or groups who are opponents of this, city government, county government, as well as KASB. It's just another step that we don't feel is needed in terms of this bill. Next bill is House Bill twenty-four-sixty-one and this is a unique bill. This bill would require local governments, including school districts, to receive approval by the Attorney General before entering into contracts for lawsuits based on a contingency fee. And so, basically, the Attorney General is saying that his opinion, his stance is that some issues could be resolved quicker if there was only him, i.e. the Attorney General representing the entire state rather than individual entities suing, whether it be the vaping industry or cases may be. This is not necessary for this lawsuit of the vaping piece as much as it's for the opioid issues that's going to be coming in the next couple of years. We believe there's going to be some major lawsuits and this is one way to ensure that any proceeds from those lawsuits would go to his office and then they would make the determination how that money is given out to different entities. And again, there's a host of opponents of this bill. We believe that's just too much power for one individual to make that decision. There's a unique career and technical bill out there, House Bill twenty-five-oh-seven. This bill would limit liability for businesses that provide work-based learning programs for secondary students, such as work-study or on-the-job training, job shadowing, internships, clinicals, practicums, apprenticeships, co-ops and industry-led service learning projects. And so what they want is for school districts to acquire an additional insurance to cover our kids and so that there's no liability on the business in terms of who's providing the opportunity for kids to be there and be a part of the work-study. What we're seeing in terms of our research is, one, it's hard to get that type of insurance. Second thing is, the companies that are willing to offer that type of insurance would require us to insure every single kid in our district, not just the kids who are doing the actual internships. So again, it becomes very cost prohibitive in that currently we already do due diligence in terms of making sure our kids are going into safe environments. We understand, you know, the businesses concerned in terms of liability, but this is a huge cost that would be added to school districts. This bill would affect our classrooms. House Bill twenty-four-seventy-six, actually presented by and proposed by one of our own legislators from our area. We require posting of the national motto, "In God We Trust," in each public school library and classroom, as well as public post-secondary institutions and state and municipal buildings, but only if such displays are donated or paid for by voluntary contributions. Such displays must include the motto and images of the flag of the United States and Kansas and be at least eleven by fourteen inches in size. Next bill deals with foster care kids, students. Senate Bill two-seventy-six, again, one of those bills proposed by one of our legislators, but basically determining residence for school attendance of children awaiting foster care or permanent placement. And so what this bill says is that kid would attend the school of the office address, not the home that that kid may be residing in. And so one of the unique concerns is, you know, there could be a group of kids who end up at one particular school. And so we would like to continue with kids being enrolled based on the address that they reside in at that point in time, not clumping it, if you will, from the office address. So those are some of the bills that we are looking at, the major bills that affect us. Every day, there's new bills that pop up. Fabian did an excellent job of testifying in a bill with school, adding cameras to our school buses. And so he did an excellent job of that. That's not included in the PowerPoint, but again, there's several bills that's out there that we're keeping an eye on. Ready for questions.
Okay. Mike?
On your voucher slide, you're talking about kids on free and reduced lunch able to get a voucher to a private school. What are the private schools saying about this?
So what you have is, they are for it with the unique caveat that they can still retain their admissions policies. Where we are from public schools is, if we're going to open it up, then you have to have the same admission policies that public schools have, which is you must take anyone and everyone, including kids who free and reduced lunch, but also kids who may have a disability. So looking at our special ed IDEA kids, that they would have the same opportunity to go to a private school as well and that private or parochial school cannot hide behind, if you will, a admissions policy and we don't want a picking and choosing of students.
They don't or we don't? They've always wanted to pick and choose their own students, the way I understand it.
And they continue to want that. So they want, they want access to the money. They don't necessarily want the open access to the students, which is, you know, Statue of Liberty, bring everyone to us.
That's what I thought you were saying. It's a shame that they're trying to do that because that just hurts the student and, you know, it hurts us, but it hurts the student more, I believe, because it's taking a kid and putting them in an environment that they can't succeed in. You know, if a kid's in poverty and he's going to a school like Collegiate, you know, he's not going to fit in and it's going to be tough. And I don't think people are thinking about those avenues, you know, to deal with. I mean, you think about the independent school, Collegiate, just the schools here in Wichita that are private schools, are well-run schools, but they choose the elite students for one reason and because they're the easier ones to teach, I believe, you know? So, boy, I hope we can keep this from happening for a lot of reasons, but it's mainly for the students more than anything else that we, we stop this and hopefully our folks in Topeka understand that. Because the thing that bothered me was the State of the Union address. Both parties talked about school vouchers and they're, and it didn't sound positive for anybody. And I think they're, they're broad-basing everything. I may be wrong. Am I, it looks like they're trying to take a swipe at everything in one instead of thinking, going through and individualizing what could happen with certain situations.
Absolutely. You know, we look at the fact that there are requirements for public schools, there are accountability reports, there are accountability measures. As we look at any kind of expansion, we would want those same accountability measures for private and parochial schools as well. But again, we don't want kids not allowed to go to a school because they didn't fit that school's criteria, what they see as a student.
Well, does, what does that, you know, that brings up another question because if they're a high school sophomore and we voucher out because of free and reduce a hundred kids, we'll never make our graduation rates because our graduation rates are figured on those kids being there at the end of their twelfth year. And so how, you know, how does that come into effect?
So the expansion of the tax credit is just for elementary students? High school graduation rate starts the moment a kid starts that ninth grade year?
So it's just elementary students that you're talking about for vouchers for free and reduced?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That makes a little bit of difference, but it still puts a big burden on a lot of people to, because if they take a special ed kid, they don't have the programs to support that kid, a lot of the private schools. But if they want to, if I want to go, if I want my kid to go and they won't take them, what's the point in doing this? I mean, that's why, I guess, you know, it's a circle. I appreciate it. Thank you, Terrell. It was a great report.
No problem, sir.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up because I want to make sure that we're all clear. We're really talking elementary only and we're talking, there is nothing in here about them accepting every child, kids with disabilities and behavior concerns and other kinds of things. They want to keep their own criteria for accepting children, but then they want the money when those kids come. Is that kind of?
Correct. And so the way the bill is written, there, there is no restriction or no addressing of any kind of admissions policies. And so, first bill, twenty-four-sixty-five, if I'm a kid, I'm on free lunch, I have the ability to go to a private parochial school if they accept me and the tax money is there, that school then was able to tap into the tax credit. For twenty-five-fifty-two, if I'm in the third grade or fourth grade and I score a one on the ELA state assessment, again, I'm able to get a voucher to go to a private or parochial school and attend that school, based on being accepted by that school.
Okay. And, and if they don't, if they don't have an ELL program for their kids in that school, they wouldn't accept them?
That is a great assumption.
Because they're based on their own, whatever their guidelines are currently?
Correct.
Okay. Mike, second question is on the dual-credit piece, the bill that we have kind of introduced and that, when it, the way that this is summarized is that it says dual enrollment in post-secondary educational institutions. So that really could be any... So that really could be any kid taking credit at a Butler County or Wichita State or somewhere else. It wouldn't necessarily only be our early childhood program, correct?
Good. And so when you look at that entire bill, it is the decision of the school board which kids they will fund, if you will. And so for Wichita, it would be the early college program.
But someone else could choose to fund any student that's going to a college concurrently with high school?
A different district, absolutely. And even though we, we wrote dual enrollment, that we were asked to use dual enrollment to stay away from Senate Bill 155 that speaks to concurrent enrollment. During our hearing, one of the things that the community colleges brought up is they would like it to be dual and/or concurrent. It's more of an issue on their end than it is for us. And so when the bill finally comes out of committee, you'll probably see dual and/or concurrent enrollment. And again, it will be the school board that has the authority to make that decision.
Okay. Because we're the ones that are paying the fee.
Correct.
So we could choose to fund only our early college program and/or if it's dual and concurrent, we could choose to fund our early college and our students who are dual-enrolled or concurrent enrolled.
Yes, in theory, you could.
Okay. So that is totally up to the school boards themselves across the state?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. Ernestine?
I just wanted to respond to Mike's comment and about this bill is, the problem is those individual private schools, they do not have to even keep the child for the whole year. They get the money at the time that it comes, and if that child, quote, isn't doing well in their school, they can kick that child out, and the money still stays there. And that child would then come back to us, and we would not have that money to educate the child, whether it's special ed or any kind of thing. They, and I've seen this happen. And these, these, never mind, vouchers. Hiss and boo.
Well, it's interesting that the state wants to finance private schools, and that's all this is, is a way to privatize education in my mind.
Exactly.
And I don't get it. I don't get where they're coming from. And I mean, taking up some time here, and this is getting away, but, you know, we've been on, how long have we talked about vouchers and, as long as I've been on the board?
They've been around 15, almost 20 years.
And, you know, why do they keep beating this dog? I, I just, and I know you don't have an answer. I don't want you to have an answer. I want that to be rhetorical, but, you know, it's just, you know, and you're right. It's, it could affect our lawsuit that we have with fair funding if we do the wrong things. I mean, there are just so many, I think, I don't know, they need to stop thinking and start doing up there, I guess. That's my political statement for the night. Thank you.
Okay. I'm seeing no other comments. Thank you very much. It's really, I appreciate having the update, and hopefully, we will continue to get these each month because I think we need to stay on top of what's going on in Topeka. And so thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work up there.
My last stop was with the Lieutenant Governor, and he asked me to share with you guys that when you are in the Capitol, would you please stop by and say hello to him? He would love to greet you when he is not in a meeting. But he wanted me to personally pass that on to you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we like our Lieutenant Governor. We feel like he's one of us.